Of the Clovis City Commission, I would like to welcome all of the commissioners. I would also like to welcome city management, department directors, city staff that have joined, and also would like to welcome the viewing public as we are having to meet virtually due to the limits on gatherings. However, the the public is invited to view the meeting. You can view the meeting on Channel 10 with sudden link, also on the city's website, cityofclovis.org, and on the city's Facebook page. And furthermore, the public is encouraged to offer their comments or questions and get those before the commission when we reach the public comment section. We would just need you to call 575-763-9200. And by calling in, you'll be, you'll have the opportunity to have your your questions up before the commission this evening. We'll begin with a word of prayer, then we'll honor our flags and and get into our meeting. So if you would, pray with me. Heavenly Father, we praise you for the opportunities that that you give us to serve you. We thank you for the many blessings that we enjoy. We ask that you be with our community during this this extended time of difficulty, and we pray you pour your blessings out on us and and be merciful. Lord, guide us as we meet this evening and lead us to do your will and to be good stewards of the city's resources and and all that you've given us to care for. We praise you for the wonderful community of Clovis, and I ask this in Jesus' name, amen. Join me in honoring our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the Zia symbol of perfect friendships among united cultures. Our meeting is called to order. With the clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Lovett.
Sorry, Commissioner Lovett here.
Commissioner Madrid.
Commissioner Madrid here.
Commissioner Casals.
Commissioner Casals here.
Commissioner Elliott.
Commissioner Elliott here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bryant.
Mayor Pro Tem Bryant here.
Commissioner Garza.
Commissioner Garza here.
Commissioner Randa.
Commissioner Rander here.
Commissioner Rowley.
Commissioner Rowley here.
Ma'am Morris.
Here, thank you, Burrow. Appreciate that. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. And when we meet in this fashion, in order to do everything correctly, I need to go to each of you and ask if you have recommended changes to the agenda. So I'll I'll begin with Commissioner Lovett.
Commissioner Lovett, I don't have any changes.
Commissioner Garza?
Commissioner Garza, no changes or concerns with the agenda.
Thank you. Commissioner Rowley?
Commissioner Rowley, no changes.
Thank you. Commissioner Elliott?
Commissioner Elliott, no changes.
And Commissioner Casals?
Commissioner Casals, no concern.
Thank you. Commissioner Madrid?
Commissioner Madrid, no changes.
Thank you. Commissioner Rander?
No changes. Commissioner Rander.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Bryant?
Mayor Pro Tem Bryant, yes, mayor, I would like to move the Eastern Mexico Water Utility Authority update to number nine, Receipts of Petitions and Communications.
Okay, thank you for that. We'll we will make that report number one, under Communications, and the Truck for Trash piece will be number two. Thank you for that. Do I hear a motion for approval?
Mayor Pro Tem Bryant, make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Lovett, second.
The motion to approve came from Mayor Pro Tem Bryant. The second came from Commissioner Lovett. Please.
Commissioner Madrid?
Yes, Commissioner Madrid, yes.
Commissioner Casals?
Commissioner Casals, yes.
Commissioner Elliott?
Commissioner Elliott, yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bryant?
Mayor Pro Tem Bryant, yes.
Commissioner Garza?
Commissioner Garza, yes.
Commissioner Randa?
Commissioner Rander, aye.
Commissioner Rowley?
Commissioner Rowley, yes.
Commissioner Lovett?
Commissioner Lovett, yes.
By vote of eight to zero, that motion is carried, and our agenda has been approved. Next is approval of minutes, and we need to look at the minutes from Thursday, November 19th, 2020. Commissioners, I'll, I assume you've had the the chance to review those minutes. I'll now check with each of you for any changes or corrections, beginning with Commissioner Garza.
I have no problem.
Thank you. Commissioner Rowley?
Commissioner Rowley, no changes.
Commissioner Elliott?
Commissioner Elliott, yes.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Elliott, is that no changes or corrections?
I didn't understand the question. Repeat that.
Yes, sir, we're we're asking if you have changes or corrections to the minutes from the November 19th meeting.
No changes, Commissioner Elliott.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Casals?
Commissioner Casals, no changes.
Thank you. Commissioner Madrid?
Commissioner Madrid, no changes.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Rander?
Commissioner Rander, no change.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Mayor Pro Tem Bryant, no, no changes or corrections.
And Commissioner Lovett?
Commissioner Lovett, no changes.
With that, do I hear a motion to approve?
Commissioner Casals, so moved.
Commissioner Madrid, second.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Casals, second from Commissioner Madrid. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Elliott?
Yes.
Commissioner, Mayor Pro Tem Bryant?
Mayor Pro Tem Bryant, yes.
Commissioner Garza?
Commissioner Garza, yes.
Commissioner Randa?
Commissioner Rander, aye.
Commissioner Rowley?
Commissioner Rowley, yes.
Commissioner Lovett?
Commissioner Lovett, yes.
Commissioner Madrid?
Commissioner Madrid, yes.
Commissioner Casals?
Commissioner Casals, yes.
Thank you. By vote of eight to zero, the motion is carried, and the minutes from November 19th are approved. Like to recognize any any visitors that have that have joined the meeting, and we look forward to hearing from you when we reach that section of the agenda that you're here for. We have no proclamations, awards, or presentations to make this evening, so that does bring us to receipts of petitions and communications. And the first item there this evening will be a report from or an update from Eastern New Mexico Water Utility Authority. And Commissioners, I would remind you that that we are the largest member of the Water Authority, and as such, we have three seats on on that board. Mayor Pro Tem Bryant sits on that board, as well as Commissioner Garza. And the city's third representative is the former mayor, David Lansford, and he's the chairman of the Water Utility Authority. And I've asked him for an update this evening, and he's been gracious enough to join the meeting by video. And and I'd like to give you the floor now, Chairman Lansford, and thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem Bryant. Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to to share a few moments with you regarding the activities of the Water Authority, which, as the mayor just indicated, includes the city of Clovis in a big way. The city of Clovis represents half the members of the Water Authority, and I'm proud to serve with Mayor Pro Tem Bryant and Commissioner Garza. You know, I I have so many thoughts in my mind, I don't know exactly where to start, and that's why I included a four-page report that hopefully you've been emailed and that you can review and and keep as a reference for future questions if if possible, or if you need to. I want to talk a little bit about the general activities of the Water Authority with respect to construction, to start with. Keep in mind, though, that this is primarily a policy report. I'm not here as the administrator. Mr. Ortega does an outstanding job for the Water Authority as administrator, but this is not necessarily administrative report. This is coming strictly as a policy report. But first of all, I want to tell you that the Water Authority has completed, excuse me, almost a $30 million project that starts just north and west of Cannon Air Force Base on County Road R, goes through the Chavis Housing addition there, north of Highway 6084, crosses over and goes into the Cannon Air Force Base installation, and goes all the way to the Epcor tanks at Martin Luther King. And that was a $30 million project referred to as Finished Water 2. Finished Water 2 is called Finished Water 2 because, excuse me, it includes what would ultimately be the finished water after it's delivered from the reservoir to the treatment plant. That makes it finished water, ready for potable use. And so anything south of what will be the water treatment plant will be referred to as a finished water section of the interim groundwater project. The interim groundwater project connects 99% of the population that is served by the Water Authority. And the intent of building the interim groundwater project first was to be able to connect all the communities together so that when ultimately you got to the reservoir, everybody that's a member would be able to receive water at the same time. And in addition to that, the interim groundwater project could serve as a functional utility in the interim until we arrive at the reservoir. Also included with the four-page report was a summary report of the recently adopted 2020 Water Authority Financial Plan. That is produced by RBC Capital Markets, and we just approved that plan at our last meeting. And it basically outlines what the financial requirements will be for the membership, what the potential revenue sources are for the Water Authority as you go down in years. Right now, the finance plan indicates that in 2026, the Water Authority would be delivering groundwater. And so to try to piece all that together, I think many of the commissioners will remember that we've been working hard to increase the funding from the federal level through the Bureau of Reclamation so that we could accelerate the development of the interim groundwater project and make it a functional utility. But it won't be a functional utility unless we have groundwater to put in it. And that groundwater that we're hopefully seeking to secure and make available will serve not only in the interim, which is, according to the finance plan, about 11 years before we get all the way to the reservoir, but also serve as a supplemental source once we get to the reservoir. Many years ago, there was a Whipple study done in 1993 that described the firm annual yield from Ute Reservoir being 24,000 acre feet per year. That study has not been updated since 1993, and the last 20 years of drought that we have sustained in eastern New Mexico has not been factored into the reservoir's ability to provide surface water. And so when I ran for office again in 2012, at that time, I was very concerned about the the reservoir being able to supply the guaranteed amount of surface water, and that's why I began looking for ways to conserve water, not only in the city, which the city has done a fantastic job of that. And mayor, in your prayer, you said that, you know, help us to be good stewards of our resources. Well, it reminded me that when Mayor Ortega and I went to Washington, DC back in the early 2000s, the message from Congress was that they would fund this project as long as we were being good stewards of the water we currently had. And we came back with that message, and subsequently, the city engaged in the reuse project, which is nearing the final phase of completion, which is a big pat on the back to the city of Clovis. Also, Epcor stepped up, came up with conservation tools, the city implemented some guidelines for when to water and when not to water your property. And so as far as being good stewards, I I think the city has done a fantastic job of that over the last 10 to 15 years. And so back to the purpose for the interim groundwater project, being that, you know, the finance plan says it's going to be 2037 before we're delivering sufficient water from the reservoir. We have 17 years before we're going to tap into that reservoir. And so that's where the interim groundwater project and a additional groundwater supply concept came into existence. In 2016, the city held a Clovis Water Conservation Summit, and there was probably somewhere around 100 people from around the state that came to it, and we talked about conservation easements. And we had a lawyer here named Peter Nichols that helped to describe what a land trust could do for our area to secure groundwater. And so we continued to move forward with that. After that, the city commissioned the City of Clovis Water Assurance Plan that took almost a year to develop, and that was led by Commissioner Clayton at the time. And so the the continued effort has been impressive, in my opinion. But when I left office a little over eight months ago, and and COVID hit, communication seemed to become a lot more difficult, as I'm sure most of you know. And so to be able to talk about these conservation initiatives and plans has been difficult. And, you know, I take responsibility for that breakdown in communication. I think that, you know, the educational component of this has really rested largely on my shoulders. And looking back on it, I know I could have done a better job. But we're where we are right now, and and I'm hopeful that we can continue to move forward. I want to talk about the the REPI program, which stands for Readiness and Environmental Protection Initiative, which is a program launched by Cannon through the Department of Defense. These are dollars that can be used for conservation easements, to take irrigation water out of production, or they can be used to purchase water rights. They can also be used for administrative expenses to secure those easements, hold those easements, and and pay for, you know, attorneys, appraisers, hydrologists, you know, to do studies to evaluate the valuations and the useful life of any water that's still available in the Paleo Channel north and west of Cannon Air Force Base. Also, right now, we're working on an intergovernmental agreement with Curry County to secure the services of Peter Nichols. Of course, a a contract of this nature where you pick the services, the professional services, there's a limit of $60,000 on that in an annual basis. And so Curry County has indicated that they want to split that expense with the Water Authority to hire Peter Nichols. And the reason for hiring Peter Nichols, I think at this point, is to give policymakers, like members of the authority, as well as city commissioners, policy advice. I can't tell you how many times I relied on Dave Richards and Jared Morris for policy advice. And so it's it's critical in my mind that Peter Nichols, who is a foremost expert on water conservation, he's licensed in Colorado and New Mexico, and I believe one other state, but he's made a few trips to New Mexico over the last six or seven years, and and visited with the Energy, Minerals, and Natural Resources Department to discuss tax credits that will be issued by the state of New Mexico. And so we've been working with Peter Nichols for the last several years, and he's very reputable, and getting him on board as early as possible to advise us on how to educate people about the value of a land trust and what it's capable of doing for our communities, as well as formulating bylaws and governing documents that would support the operation of a land trust. The reason for a local land trust compared to using a a national land trust or a land trust that's already in existence in New Mexico is to maintain local control. One of the things I learned at a conservation summit in Colorado approximately seven years ago was what's called an inclusive model. It's a model that includes all the stakeholders, which includes landowners, Cannon Air Force Base, the city, the county, the Water Authority. Anybody that is a significant stakeholder would be involved in the governance of the land trust. And so I've pushed very hard to make sure that if the REPI application is approved, that we have a local land trust that would be able to to manage those easements and to implement the program that REPI intends. Now, REPI, under Jeff Davis at Cannon Air Force Base Civil Engineering, he's worked tirelessly. I can't tell you how many hours he's put into this in research and making this application as strong as it can be. And and word from him is is that the application is $15 million from the Department of Defense, and that it's made its way up to the Secretary of Defense, and it's getting a lot of attention. And keep in mind that what we're trying to accomplish here, utilizing conservation easements and possibly buying some water rights that are protected by conservation easements, is to secure water for the region, not just for Cannon Air Force Base. And so that's why the NRCS, the National Rural Conservation Services, okay, and that's a a big agency within the U.S. Department of Agriculture, they have put in an application through the New Mexico Conservation Districts, okay? And Debbie Hughes is the executive director there, and she's been working with Jeff Davis at Cannon to help strengthen that application. REPI dollars require a match. And so through this NRCS and RCPP grant application, they've put in a maximum request for 10 million. And it's getting tremendous attention from U.S. U.S. Department of Agriculture, and that all adds up to $25 million. That's incredible opportunity right there for the communities of eastern New Mexico to to leverage those dollars to secure additional groundwater. The RCPP grant needs a match, and the REPI needs a match, but they serve as a match for each other. And that's really a fantastic part of this. Now, other people, other agencies, government agencies can come into play and contribute money toward the effort, but I'm not sure that that's going to be needed right now as far as purchasing conservation easements or buying water rights. I think there's a likelihood that there will be additional funding on top of that 25 million. That would include, again, some administrative expense. So the way I see it right now, we're in an excellent position to explore the opportunities that exist in the Paleo Channel north and west of Cannon as a groundwater source that would serve as a as a supplemental source now in the interim, as well as a supplemental source once the reservoir is reached. I'm trying to think where we stand right now with Curry County. I know that Mr. Ortega and Mr. Pyle are working on the intergovernmental agreement. Both bodies will have to approve that in in meetings forthcoming. Once that is approved, and the language in that intergovernmental agreement is approved, then we'll develop a scope of work, which basically boils down to educational component, so that Peter Nichols can help educate the city commission, the county commission, the Water Authority, and any interested stakeholders in what a land trust is capable of doing for our area. And so I suspect that that process could be completed by the end of January. And it's my understanding that really there's not going to be any money flowing from any of these applications until probably March or April. And it may be late January or February before we find out if the REPI application and the RCRCPP application have been approved. And so we have time to to get organized and to establish a framework for local control over any water resources that are secured in the Paleo Channel. Now, if you back up to where all of this started, it started with the Trinity Report in 2012, when Cannon and Pearlberg Field commenced a report, an engineering report, to evaluate the sustainability of Cannon Air Force Base. And included in that report was a number of observations as well as recommendations. One of the recommendations, of course, was to have a redundant line to Cannon from Clovis that could serve as a backup for Cannon should their wells not meet demand. Well, we basically have that in place now with Finished Water 2, which is, I described earlier, the line between Cannon and Clovis. You know, this whole issue of of trying to secure water, you know, boils down to the fact that the Trinity Report shows that there will have to be additional groundwater sources to serve as a supplement. And I think it's incumbent upon us to take this And I think it's incumbent upon us to take this opportunity with the REPI application and the RCPP application to explore the possibilities. I described this the other day, kind of like an oil company that sees a potential for oil production, and so they have to invest venture capital to explore whether or not it's worth proceeding with full development of a wellfield. And so that's what a land trust would do, is it would have an administration that would begin the process of quantifying, vetting, and appraising the true value of the water in the Paleo Channel, as well as the easements in the Paleo Channel. If you can picture in your mind an egg, and in the center of the egg is the yolk, and around that is the egg white, and that's kind of the pictorial description of what we're trying to do in the Paleo Channel is find the sweet spot where the lowest part of the Paleo Channel is, and securing those water rights for use so that we can actually take delivery on those water rights. And then around those water rights that are owned and can be used for municipal and industrial use, you buy conservation easements so that irrigation farming adjacent to and proximal to the egg yolk is not being utilized, so it basically secures the water that you purchased in the middle. And so that's the concept. Some of the money would be used to purchase water through water right purchases in the sweet spot of the Paleo Channel, which I estimate could be 4,000 acres. And then possibly three to four times that much would be in conservation easements, which would effectively shut off wells and prevent competitive irrigation in the area where we've purchased water rights. Well, the big question comes up is, well, who's going to own those water rights? I mean, are they going to be bought and paid for? And so, you know, how are we going to take delivery? You know, who's going to hold title? How much is that water going to be, you know, once it's secured? You know, again, these are all questions that I don't have the answers for, but as I've stated earlier, we have enough information to know that we need to take the venture and explore what the possibilities are out there, and I think it's minimal expense. I don't have a budget of an existing land trust. I do know that there's going to be a lot of exploratory expenses, but those expenses are going to be necessary to see if it's worthwhile to purchase water rights and to purchase easements or not. And so we can't get to that point unless we're willing to do developmental expenses, upfront exploratory development activities and expenses in order to make a good quality decision at some point down the road. The land trust and the educational component is going to be paid for by the Authority and Curry County. I think that's going to be easily covered. I think Peter Nichols estimated $20,000 to $30,000 is all he would need to advise us, educate us, and to begin the process of developing the land trust documents. One thing to keep in mind is that in order to hold easements, you have to be a certified land trust. Well, Peter Nichols' qualifications helped to certify us if we form a new land trust, but we would have to be incubated by an existing land trust, perhaps in the state of New Mexico or a national land trust. And so there's a couple of land trusts in New Mexico that I've had conversation with. There's a land trust in Taos, there's also a land trust in another part of northern New Mexico, and both of them, I think, would be interested in helping incubate our land trust in the interim until we could get it fully certified to move forward in earnest. Let me look at my notes here. Want to go back just a little bit to... Let's see here. Well, did... I hope that you were able to access the four-page report. I don't know, Mayor, did you guys...
We...
...that report?
Yes, sir, we have that. I think that was distributed to all of the commission.
Okay. On the fourth page of that report, you may not be able to pull it up, but there's a graph from the Canadian River Municipal Water Authority, and they are the closest water authority in the region to the eastern New Mexico Water Utility Authority. They take their surface water from Lake Meredith, which is also on the Canadian River. And so you've got Conchas that's on the Canadian, and then it flows down to Yew Reservoir, and then from Yew Reservoir, it flows to Meredith. And so the communities in the Panhandle of Texas, including Lubbock and Amarillo and Plainview, have been utilizing Lake Meredith water. But the graph that is on the report shows the total water that was consumed by, I believe it's nine or 11 members of the Canadian River Municipal Water Authority, I think it's 11 members, how much water came from Lake Meredith, and how much water came from the local community's city water supply, as well as how much water came from wells that the Canadian River Water Municipal Authority had purchased. And you'll see that in the report in more detail. But it's a very telling report over the last 20 years. It shows that Lake Meredith was unable to meet demand and couldn't meet any of the demand in two years, from 2012, 2013, and was very, very small in its production for the last few years. And so they've been relying heavily on groundwater that was purchased by the Canadian Municipal Water Authority. And had they not done that, when they did that, they would have had a crisis in the Panhandle of Texas because Lake Meredith was unable to produce. And so going back to 2012, when I took office the second time, I was concerned about the reservoir being able to meet our demands. And even since the Whipple Study was done, it indicated that only eight to nine out of 10 years would the reservoir be able to meet demand, even under normal conditions. Well, I think if you add the last 20 years in there, and that study hasn't been updated, I think you'll find that there's strong evidence to suggest that there's going to be significant groundwater needs in all the member communities, and possibly if the Water Authority can acquire some water to meet the needs of a membership. So I'll kind of stop right there. I also included, before I stop, I did include the summary document of the 2020 Water Authority Finance Plan. Just a couple of things you might want to look in there. It shows that in 2026, it's anticipated that the Water Authority would be delivering surface water. In 2036, '37, it's anticipated that we would get all the way to Yew Reservoir. Another key component of that finance plan that I think is worth noticing is the operational and maintenance expenses of the Water Authority once we start taking water from the reservoir. The biggest expense related to water from the reservoir is the energy expense to move it 70-plus miles from Yew Reservoir to the membership communities in Curry and Roosevelt Counties. And then when you add to that the water treatment facility that I think is, I think estimated around $40 million, the energy and the filtration expenses to clean up that surface water to make it potable. Well, the cost of doing that, just to get it potable in 2036, 2037, is probably in the neighborhood of $12 to $15 million O and M, okay? And the finance plan shows that the cost of water from the reservoir is going to be four times what it costs to deliver surface water right now. So surface water, if purchased appropriately, is always going to be the least expensive water. It doesn't have to be cleaned, you don't have to move it as far, and the storage is free, basically, once you secure it in the ground. So my hope for really the last eight years has been to develop the interim groundwater project, make it a functional utility, and in the, you know, tandem time to be able to develop some groundwater sources to put into the interim groundwater project, to make it to where it can function, and start generating some revenue to cover some of the operational expenses of the Water Authority. Right now, the membership contributions cover everything for the Water Authority. And keep in mind that the Water Authority is a development in progress. You know, the Water Authority won't be functional until we're all the way to the reservoir. So when the city, the county, and Potalas, and everybody else got involved in the Water Authority, it was, you know, with that understanding that we are a development in progress, and we have several years to go, and there'll be several other leaders involved in bringing this to full fruition. But my hope, again, is to create a functional utility, keep the cost of water affordable, to work with a land trust, to optimize available funding from outside sources, to help us do what we need to do. And so I'm going to stop right there and answer any questions. I know I probably talked for almost 30 minutes, and I apologize for that, but I appreciate the time, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and we appreciate your time in giving the report. I'd like to check with... Sorry, I just got some feedback. Mayor Pro Tim Bryant, as I said, of course, Mayor Pro Tim Bryant sits on the Water Authority. Do you have anything to add to that report or any comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Chairman Lansford, that is a very good report, thank you for that. Just a couple of things, Mayor, you know, we've just, we've been under discussion on this for quite some time, and we've had a lot of separate meetings concerning our water situation and kind of the direction that we're going. Chairman Lansford is exactly correct. Anytime we've gone and asked for funding, whether it's on the federal level or even on the state level, the question comes up every time is, what are you doing to help yourselves? And now that we're under construction, that is a huge advantage on being able to acquire funding. And so that's helped immensely. One thing that we aren't doing is we're not coming together as a group. We're having a lot of single meetings, and we're not getting on the same page, and I feel like that's important at this point, that all the entities get together and get on the same page and have this discussion as a group, because it's going to affect our community's water situation for the future, not just for us, but for our grandchildren, our kids, and the future of our city. And so that's about all I have. I just think it's important that we do get together and start talking about, you know, what we need to do. And if needed, you know, I'd like to see the city participate in hiring Peter Nichols. I think it's important that we have somebody on board that can answer a lot of the questions that not only we have, but landowners are going to have as well. And so I think that's an important part of this. I don't want to get the cart in front of the horse, but at the same time, I think we need answers to move forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Commissioner Garza, as a member or as a board member on the Authority, do you have anything to add to that?
Well, Mayor Pro Tim Bryant stated very well what we need to be doing, and I concur with that, so that's all I have.
Great, great. Well, thank you for that. I'd like to check with each of the commissioners for any questions that they may have for either Chairman Lansford or Commissioner Garza or Mayor Pro Tim Bryant. I'll start with Commissioner Rowley.
Commissioner Rowley, I don't have any questions or concerns at this point.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Elliott.
Yeah, just, I know that's very important. I appreciate former Mayor David Lansford for all the hard work, and Chris, and Juan, and that whole Authority. And water is about the most important thing that we face, and we've got to have water or we won't have a city or a base or anything else. So thank you for all the hard work, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Cassaus.
I don't have no comment. That was a good report. Thank you, Mayor Lansford.
Thank you.
Commissioner Madrid.
Commissioner Madrid here. No questions. Thank you for that report.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Lovett.
I really don't have any questions at this time. I really do appreciate the work that's going into this. Water is vital and an important part of our future, in fact, probably the most important part of Clovis's future. I know there'll be more questions later, and look forward to being part of those discussions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, same here. Chairman Lansford, you know, I appreciate the report, I appreciate the opportunity to be brought in on that educational piece that you talked about with exploring the land trust, as well as exploring the other possibilities. And, you know, I'd echo what Mayor Pro Tim Bryant said, and just how important it is that we all be at the table discussing these issues. And as you mentioned at the beginning of your report, it's been a difficult year to do that, and I hope that we can, you know, overcome those obstacles and be at the table during that exploration process and that educational process. So again, thank you for being here. If you have any closing remarks, we'd like to give you the chance to do that, but then we wouldn't expect you to necessarily have to stay for the rest of our meeting.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and commissioners. I just want to read one little sentence here from the report. It says, "The formation of a land trust essentially allows for an inclusive, non-political entity to be created where all stakeholders are at the table to develop and implement a plan to conserve water and land resources that result in the greatest public benefit." That's what a land trust's mission is, is strictly for a public benefit. Some people have said, well, you know, it's, we're going to get, you know, taken for a ride on valuations, but because tax credits and tax deductions factor into conservation easements, there is a high level of scrutiny from both the state and the federal level on valuations, and so it's going to be almost impossible to justify paying more for something than it's worth. And the other thing, too, to note is, is, you know, we're going to buy the water that's there. We're not going to buy the water that's listed as a water right. That water out there will be quantified, evaluated, and determined to be a certain production level, and we will buy it based on its tangible value, not its water right value per se, because its water right value is far different than its real value when you start to quantify it and actually determine how long and how much that water will be able to deliver for the membership. Is it going to be 4,000 acre feet per year for 20 years? Is it going to be 3,000 acre feet per 25? Or what's the number going to be? And that's why a land trust is important, to come up with those numbers so that we can make real game time decisions when the time comes. And a lot of those decisions can't be made yet. It's like launching the Mayflower. I don't think they knew 400 years ago everything they were going to encounter, but they had the courage to launch it and solve problems as they came across them. And this is really no different. We have to have the courage to step out and spend the money and the time and the educational requirements to make the best decisions possible for our future. And we can't have all the answers right now, but again, I think it's time to, in earnest, you know, launch the Mayflower. So thank you guys so much for hearing me out. I could talk all night, and you guys would fall asleep. I could talk all night, and you guys would fall asleep, but What's going through, you know, it's, it's not a tough, tough, I mean, it's a tough time to govern anywhere right now, and so hang in there and take care of each one of you.
Mr. Lansford, don't drop off just yet. I have to beg the forgiveness of Commissioner Render. I failed to, I failed to go to him in this, in this forum meeting, in this mode of meeting. It's hard to keep that straight, and I'm sorry, Commissioner Render. I, I would like to give you the opportunity to make the comment or ask a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Casaus covered all my questions.
Very good. Well, again, thank you, Mr. Lansford. Appreciate you being here. Appreciate the report. Look forward to visiting with you more about this.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners. Next, under petitions and communications, we have a, a report regarding the October 2020 Trek for Trash, and Ms. Burrows is going to take care of that for us. Ms. Burrows?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and Commissioners. I just want to check that you can see my screen.
We can.
Great, so thank you very much to everybody who helped the, our, our Trek for Trash activity this year. Of course, it was a hybrid model due to the COVID restrictions, and it was a bitterly cold day to boot, so it was, it was a bit of a challenge, but we, we got through it without, without too much trouble. We had eight teams this year for this event, and I want to thank the, the base, the freshman academy, the, the Ninth AMU, Mayor Morris, yourself for coming out and in the, in the cold with the First Lady to, to help with family to clean up. Team RG, the LRS at Cannon, and then Clovis Main Street, who actually came out the day before to, to help clean up the downtown area. Here's some photographs of Lisa and her helpers, who, who came out and, and cleaned up in the, on the Main Street and in the alleys around Main Street. And then here's a couple of photographs of, of some of the volunteers. We picked up two hundred and fourteen bags of trash, amazingly, during the hours that we were out there volunteering. There's a picture of you, Merrill, huddled up with, in the cold. And then here's some photographs of some of the folk from Cannon Air Force Base, who came out and, and helped, too. They were on Martin Luther King. We cleaned up all the usual areas, including Goodwin Lake Trails and, and all, you know, the main highways, as usual. We picked up two hundred and twenty-three tires and a hundred and eleven tons of MSW over the course of the weekend. I want to thank Commissioner Madrid, who's the chairman of the Parks and Recreation Committee, for coming out and assisting. I'd like to thank Tabitha Leinberger, who writes the grants for this program, for all her assistance, Public Works, Clint, all your guys that come out and assist, the Parks guys that, that come out as well, Vicky and Kelsey for all their efforts with advertising and sharing of the information throughout the, throughout the event. So it went very well. We didn't have prizes like we usually do because of all the COVID safe practices, but we did drawings and gave out pizzas to, to people for, as part of that. So thank you to everybody for, for your assistance and, and support of this event. I was very glad that we managed to achieve this despite the restrictions we were under.
This is
Commissioner.
I want to thank the whole, all the people from the city that were out there working that day, and all the volunteers that helped out there, especially you, Mayor, since you were out there in the cold. Thank you. And I also want to say that we're going to have a Holly Jolly Holiday Challenge, and I'm going to turn that over to Claire. She's going to explain what it is.
Yes, so we're in festive spirit, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and Commissioners, and we're going to have a, a Holly Jolly Holiday Challenge. It's maybe backwards, way around, but what we are, what we're going to do, and you're going to see a press release come out tomorrow about it, is now through, I think about the eighteenth of December, we'd like to encourage the public to nominate residents throughout the community that are showing Christmas spirit, holiday spirit. And we're going to ask you Commissioners, and some of you who have been with the Commission for several years will know we've done this in the past, to go and, and select the two residents in each one of the districts for, for recognition for the, for the Holly Jolly Holiday Challenge. So that'll be coming out tomorrow, so, and if the public, for the viewing public, you can go on the City of Clovis's website, and there's a fillable form there, and you can also share a photograph if you like, and, and we'll have fun with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burrows and, and Commissioner Madrid, for, for telling us about the, that, the holiday program. That sounds like fun. Appreciate that very much. And again, thank you to everyone that helped with Trek for Trash and, and Ms. Burrows for that, that presentation. And, and that was a bitterly cold day. The wind went right through that hoodie I was wearing in that photo there. It's at this point in the agenda that we would, I would like to open it up to anyone, any member of the public that has communications or, or public comment, and I'll need someone to make me aware if, if we do have folks on the, on the phone waiting. I see Mr. Gene Porter has joined the meeting. Mr. Porter, if you're here for public comment, we'd love to hear from you at this point.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and the Commissioners. I appreciate you giving us an opportunity and a little bit of time. Your time, we know, is extremely valuable, and, and it will do, I will not take much of your time. I, I jumped on, I wanted to jump on to tonight because I wanted to express my heartfelt gratitude for the work that everyone involved with the CARES funding. I just wanted to thank you guys and shed some light on what, as a small business that we dealt with in 2020, similar stories, I'm sure, for, for many, many businesses. But I have, as of this month, Glass Doctor and Larry's Auto Glass have been in business under my control for twenty-one years this month. We started that in nineteen ninety-nine at our new location, and, and we've, we've had very, we've had varied levels of success, and the community has been good to my business and to my family, and, and to the families of our, of, of my employees. Twenty twenty was the first time that I, contemplating bankruptcy was the first time I'd ever had that thought cross my mind. And, yeah, as a businessman, that's a very hard, that's a hard word to come out of your mouth, because it's really tied to failure, or at least in my eyes. And that took place two times in twenty twenty, and we were in discussions in November about how to execute the process and to, how to start downsizing the business, preparing for that. And when we had the opportunity to apply for the, the funding, it was a, it was a, it was a beacon of hope for us to be able to try to recoup all of the lost business and expenses, and, and we weren't sure, we were afraid that it might come too little, too late for us. We weren't sure if it was, the application process was going to be drug out into twenty twenty-one, and how far into that. And I know that you guys have probably taken quite a bit of heat in different areas of this, of the, of the, of, of the funding, but I, for one, am grateful because we now are able to re, rebound from the, the hardships of twenty twenty from the COVID pandemic. As hard as we tried, it was becoming a point where we were afraid that we weren't going to survive. Even though we were considered an essential business, the fear associated with the pandemic reduced our business at some points as much as eighty percent. And that's, that's a hard, that's a hard one to come, overcome after, over several months. And in, I guess, to, to summarize, the CARES money that you guys were able to put together for Clovis saved our business, and, and as a result, saved jobs. And so I just wanted to thank you guys for what you, for the hard work you've done and, for doing what you did. And I know that our, our team and, and my family are very, very grateful for what you've done for us.
You're, you're very welcome. Mr. Porter, Gene, thank you for, for joining our meeting tonight and sharing that with I, I don't know what to say, but I, I would just say thank you for, for sharing that with us, and, and we're proud of you and proud of your business, proud of what you mean and, and, and who you are to Clovis. And thank you so much for, for, for coming and sharing that with us. Commissioners, is there any, anyone that would like to make a comment?
Mayor, this is Mayor Pro Tim. Gene, thank you so much for coming and letting us know how your business was affected during this time and how the CARES money actually helped your business survive. You know, the whole purpose of the CARES money was to support as many businesses as we could throughout this COVID issue. And so, you know, nobody expected a second shutdown, and we were able to help a lot more businesses out with the, the second round of funding. So, you know, it's, it's good to hear when a small business comes to us and says they were able to survive this with the, with the help of the CARES funding. So congratulations for that, and, and we're glad we were able to help. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim.
Gene, this is Commissioner Elliott. Thank you so much for your, your talk about the CARES Act, and, and I do believe it's been saving a lot of businesses that, just like you said, you put it with bankrupt, and you do a lot for the community, and I thank you for that. You're a good friend, you're a good brother, and just thank you for sharing that with us. We don't always get good reports, but we appreciate it when we do, and we thank you so much for that. Good luck, and God bless you.
Yes.
Commissioner Madrid. I just want to thank Gene, and I'm glad I was able to help you, and I hope it helped all the other people that we gave money to. I'm glad we got that money approved for the city. Thank you very much for sharing with us.
Like, give any, anyone else the opportunity to, to make a comment if they like?
Mayor.
Yes, Commissioner Render.
God bless, Gene. Hang in there. Good luck.
Yeah, that, that says it. Well, thank you, Gene, for sharing that and, and expressing your gratitude. It, it's a big team. It's a, it's a good, a good amount of teamwork that went into not only going out and, and getting that money for the city, but then administering it has been an undertaking. And the folks at the Chamber and the SBDC have been, have, have, have been working hard on that, and so it's worth it. All, all of the work is worth it, and if, if we're getting money, getting vital funds that, that are helping businesses in Clovis, and that was the reason we did the second round, was so that we could help as many businesses as possible. Again, thanks. Appreciate you, my friend. Thanks for being here, and God bless you. Is there anyone else on the, either in the video meeting or on the phone wishing to provide public comment?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Ms. Burrows.
I apologize. I forgot to recognize Commissioner Rowley. She came out and helped at Trek for Trash as well, handing out goodies at the start of it all, so thank you, Commissioner Rowley.
Thanks for pointing that out.
It was definitely cold, but it was a good experience. I'm glad I could be
Well, thank you for coming out and helping.
Thanks for pointing that out. Okay, did we have anyone on the phone or anyone else in the video meet wishing to provide public comment? Seeing and hearing none, we'll, we'll move on. Commissioners next in the agenda is the consent agenda. As you know, this item is placed on the agenda. Sorry, I just had a moment where I wondered if I was muted. Okay, you can hear me. So this item is placed on the agenda so that the Commission, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. If any proposal does not meet with the approval of all Commission members or of the citizens, so requests, that item will be heard when reached under the regular agenda. The first item there is the motion to place. So we'll begin with item number two, and it is request for approval of adoption of ordinance number two one three nine dash twenty twenty relating to flood hazard areas and amending existing code sections. Item three is request for approval of adoption of ordinance number two one four zero dash twenty twenty relating to garbage, rubbish, and solid waste collection and disposal fees, amending existing code sections. Item number four is request for approval of adoption of ordinance number two one four one dash twenty twenty relating to sewer system service charges and sewer connection fees for single and multi, multifamily residential structures, amending existing code sections. Number five is, number five is request for approval of an easement encroachment of existing fence located at one one two four Concord. I'll now go to each of you for concerns or comments about the consent agenda. I'll begin with Commissioner Elliott.
I have no, no, nothing to comment on it. It's fine.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Casaus?
No comment. Commissioner Casaus?
Thank you, Commissioner Madrid.
No concerns, Commissioner Madrid.
Commissioner Render?
No concerns.
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant?
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant, no concerns.
Commissioner Lovett?
Commissioner Lovett, no concerns.
Commissioner Garza?
Commissioner Garza, no concerns.
And do I hear a motion to place these items on the consent agenda?
Commissioner Render, so moved.
Second, Commissioner Garza.
Motion to place from Commissioner Render. The second came from Commissioner Garza. Could we please have a roll call?
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant?
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant, yes.
Commissioner Garza?
Commissioner Garza, yes.
Commissioner Render?
Commissioner Render, aye.
Commissioner Rowley?
Commissioner Rowley, yes.
Commissioner Lovett?
Commissioner Lovett, yes.
Commissioner Madrid?
Commissioner Madrid, yes.
Commissioner Casaus?
Commissioner Casaus, yes.
Commissioner Elliott?
Commissioner Elliott, yes.
By a vote of eight to zero, the motion is carried. Do I now, now hear a motion to approve or acknowledge all items on the consent agenda?
Don't move. Commissioner Casaus?
Second.
Commissioner Madrid.
Motion to approve or acknowledge all items from Commissioner Casaus, second from Commissioner Madrid. Could we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Garza?
Commissioner Garza, yes.
Commissioner Render?
Commissioner Render, aye.
Commissioner Rowley?
Commissioner Rowley, yes.
Commissioner Lovett?
Commissioner Lovett, yes.
Commissioner Madrid?
Commissioner Madrid, yes.
Commissioner Casaus?
Commissioner Casaus, yes.
Commissioner Elliott?
Commissioner Elliott, yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant?
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant, yes.
Thank you. By a vote of eight to zero, the motion is carried. We have nothing to deal with in the next two sections, so we are on to new business. And item one, under new business, is request for approval of And item one under new business is request for approval of transfer of ownership of interlocal liquor license from KBNG Incorporated to BWC Investments LLC to be located at 2208 North Prince. And City Attorney, Mr. Jared Morris, can you advise on this, please?
I can, Mayor. Thank you and good evening, Mayor Protem Bryant and Commissioners. As most of you probably know, Kelly's Bar and Grill changed hands earlier this year. And as part of that process, they have sought to transfer the existing liquor license from the prior ownership group to the current ownership group. The state's alcoholic beverage control division has granted them preliminary approval for a transfer from KBNG Incorporated to BWC Investments LLC, which I understand will still do business as Kelly's Bar and Grill. BWC Investments is a local Clovis LLC and the managing member is Daryl Hanson, who I spoke with earlier this afternoon and I believe is on the phone to answer questions if they arise. In order for final approval to be granted by the state, there has to be a public hearing held in front of the city commission and final approval ultimately granted by the city. Tonight's public hearing was published twice in the Eastern New Mexico News as required by statute and is also held within forty-five days of our initial receipt of our preliminary approval, which is likewise required by statute. Just a brief reminder, maybe for the new commissioners, after the public hearing, in order to deny approval, there must be evidence presented that the specific applicant, which would be BWC LLC or the specific location poses a detriment to public healthy, public health, excuse me, safety or morals. So with that, Mayor, I would turn it back over to you to initiate the public hearing if you're prepared. And if there are any witnesses, I'm happy to swear them in.
Okay, very good. I merely want to announce now that we are commencing with the public hearing and we are now in the public hearing. If there's anyone that wishes to give testimony, as Mr. Morris said, he will need to swear you in. Is there anyone wishing to give testimony related to the facts relevant to this applicant or location?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Garza?
This license has been in operation for many years, so I don't see any problems with it, so I move for approval.
If I may, Mayor, we'll, we'll first have to have a motion and a second and a vote to close the hearing and then we can move on to the approval process.
So if there is no one that wishes to give testimony, then I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Commissioner Render, moved.
Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing from Commissioner Render. Do we have a second?
Second.
And the second from Commissioner Garza. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Render?
Commissioner Render, yes.
Commissioner Rowley? Commissioner Lovett?
Commissioner Lovett, yes.
Commissioner Madrid?
Commissioner Madrid, yes.
Commissioner Casaus?
Commissioner Casaus, yes.
Commissioner Elliott?
Commissioner Elliott, yes.
Mayor Protem Bryant?
Mayor Protem Bryant, yes.
Commissioner Garza?
Commissioner Garza, yes.
Okay, so the motion is carried and the public hearing is, is closed. So now back to the agenda item, the request for approval. Do we hear a motion?
So moved.
Second, Commissioner Casaus.
A motion to approve from Commissioner Garza, second from Commissioner Casaus. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Rowley?
Commissioner Rowley, yes.
Commissioner Lovett?
Commissioner Lovett, yes.
Commissioner Madrid?
Commissioner Madrid, yes.
Commissioner Casaus?
Commissioner Casaus, yes.
Commissioner Elliott?
Commissioner Elliott, yes.
Mayor Protem Bryant?
Mayor Protem Bryant, yes.
Commissioner Garza?
Commissioner Garza, yes.
Commissioner Render?
Commissioner Render, aye.
By a vote of eight to zero, the motion is carried. Thank you. Item number two under new business is request for approval of agreement between the City of Clovis and Delta Consulting LLC. And City Manager, Mr. Justin Hawalt, is going to advise on that. Mr. Hawalt?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem and Commissioners. Before I get into the actual agenda item in front of you this evening, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce you to our new HR Director Cindy Wentworth. Hoping to, to be able to introduce her in, in person. However, we're, we'll make do with the best we can here. We're excited to have Cindy on board with us. She actually comes to us from Stanton, Texas, where she has served in previous capacities as directors for HR for various medical facilities. But we're glad to have her home because Cindy is actually a hometown Clovis native, graduated from Clovis High School. So we're excited to have Cindy on board and I think she's going to be a great fit for our organization, be able to pick up right where Andre left off and provide good things for us in the future. So thanks for allowing me to introduce her and I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask her, she's probably not expecting this, but Cindy, if you'd like to say anything, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you that opportunity. Do you have to unmute?
I did unmute. Thank you. Nice to meet all of you and to see all of you. I'm so glad to be back to, into town and just look forward to serving the community in the City of Clovis with any HR needs that they have. So thank you for the opportunity and thank you, Justin, for the introduction.
All right, thank you. So jumping back into the, to the agenda item that's before you this evening. Over the last sixteen months, the City of Clovis has made great strides in, in working on various tasks through our HR department. We've accomplished rewriting our personnel policy manual. We've completed a salary and compensation study. We've gotten that study, as you're all aware of, and the employees are thankful for, of being able to implement that at ninety-seven and a half percent. However, we still have lots to do. In our HR department is, is one of our smaller departments and organizations within the city with, with only being staffed with three employees. And so sometimes with most other departments, it helps to have a little bit of help from the outside world. And so what we have done is gone out and sought a scope and fee from Delta, Delta Consulting to provide us some of that assistance. And that includes looking at our job descriptions. And so when we did the class and comp and completing that, we want to make sure that our job descriptions across the organization are in line. Make sure that a supervisor, whether they're in the Parks Department or Public Works Department or over in their Senior Services Department, that there are some consistent job duties that need to be across that board. So we want to go through and evaluate every one of our job descriptions and make sure that the, the knowledge and skills are consistent across those. We're also going to be faced with continued needs to look at our compensation. As you're all aware, the next two years, we have additional minimum wage increases that we have to address. And in coming up, actually in January, we need to address the, the upcoming minimum wage increase. So being able to take what we've done and analyze and be able to project out the changes that we may need to make within the organization to address those minimum wage increases. And then something that we were working on is, is our overall training, making sure that our, our annual employee training is accurate in getting out to the employees what they need to do. This would be an initial first year type situation where the, the slide deck of presentations was getting put together and assembled. And then making sure that we're putting a program in place to make sure our employees are receiving the annual training that they need to be receiving. And then finally, a gap analysis, making sure that our employees and, and within our organization and what our organizational charts look like are, are covered from succession planning to, to being able to put in those employee development plans to where we can continue to grow our employees. So that's kind of a general overview of what Delta Consulting would be providing for us. The actual proposal is included in your packets. The fees for this is, including grocery receipts tax, would be seventeen thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents. And those would come from Fund Forty-Eight, our professional dues, fees and services. We also have online with us, and just for your information, Delta Consulting is made comprised of and includes Mr. Andre McQueen, our former HR Director. And so he definitely has the knowledge necessary to continue on with these projects to help us bring these tasks to fruition, fruition sooner rather than later. And so I'd open it up to Mr. McQueen to add anything that he may have. Just to remind him, he may need to press star six to unmute himself on the, on the telephone.
Thank you, Mr. Hawalt. I appreciate the commission considering this proposal. To Mr. Hawalt's point, I think there's a lot of things that we put in place in the last fifteen or sixteen months. And these projects will continue that. It helps finalize the structure of the organization in order to help for that employee development. One of the things that we hope to accomplish is identify those gaps and look at areas where we can focus our training and development dollars to ensure continuity of operations going forward. And I believe that this will help those particular aspects of ensuring that we are a good, strong and resilient organization.
Mayor, so.
I, I will answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. McQueen. We appreciate, appreciate you joining. We already say we, we miss you. And I also say, uh, uh, welcome and I'm glad, or I guess it's welcome home, Ms. Wentworth. We're, we're so glad to have a wildcat come home and, and happy to have you with the City of Clovis. I will check with each Commissioner for any comments or questions that, that you may have for Mr. McQueen or for Mr. Hawalt on this. I'll start with Commissioner Casaus.
Welcome, Ms. Wentworth, and I look forward to meeting you. And Andre, I know he worked very hard on this and I am glad to see that it's all coming together. That's my comment.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Madrid.
Commissioner Madrid here. I'm glad it's all coming together. I'm glad the people are going to get a raise and all that from this deal and I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Render?
Commissioner Render, I'd like to welcome Cynthia and say hello to Andre. And, and Andre sounds something like hard gay.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mayor Protem Bryant?
Mayor Protem Bryant. Cynthia, welcome back to Clovis. I'm glad to have you with the city. And I do have one question. We do have a start date. What is the, what is the duration of the agreement?
Mr. Commissioner, right now, the only item that we really have a hard date on is the class and comp implementation reflecting the change in minimum wage this January. The other items, I don't know which ones the city manager would like me to start on first. I know the annual training will be ready to go next week. And then the job description and review will be dependent on the, the series and how I do it, but it should be about two to three months to get the job descriptions done. And then the gap analysis will probably take another two, maybe three months depending on the availability of the data that I get back from the city.
Okay, probably, probably six months, probably?
Yes, that's my estimation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Commissioner Lovett?
I, you know, welcome aboard. I certainly enjoy to have those back in Clovis and those that bleed purple. So that's great, Cynthia. Thanks for being here. I also want to applaud the use of these type of requests. It saves money in the long run and we don't need to have somebody on staff full time. And these, these little contracts can help fill the gap. So I appreciate that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Garza?
Commissioner Garza, yes, wants, wants to say Cynthia, welcome to the, to the group of fine people that we have in the city and say hello to Andre. And I, I can, I concur with Commissioner Render. He has got a voice for a radio announcer or something. I don't know. We miss Andre, so welcome, Cynthia.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. Commissioner Rowley?
Commissioner Rowley, I don't have any questions right now, but welcome, Cynthia. We'll read what everyone else has said.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Elliott?
Commissioner Elliott, yeah, thank you, Andre, and welcome aboard, Cynthia, and it's good to have you back in God's country.
Very good. Any other, any other questions or do I hear a motion?
Mayor Protem Bryant, I'll make a motion to approve this agreement.
Second, Commissioner Render.
Motion for approval from Mayor Protem Bryant, second from Commissioner Render. Could we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Lovett?
Commissioner Lovett, yes.
Commissioner Madrid? Commissioner Casaus?
Commissioner Casaus, yes.
Commissioner Elliott?
Commissioner Elliott, yes.
Mayor Protem Bryant?
Mayor Protem Bryant, yes.
Commissioner Garza?
Commissioner Garza, yes.
Commissioner Render? Commissioner Rowley?
Commissioner Rowley, yes.
By a vote of eight to zero, the motion is carried. Thank you. And I once again welcome Ms. Wentworth and Mr. McQueen. Thanks for being here and I appreciate your continued service to the city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Item number three under new business, Commissioners, is request for approval for the City of Clovis to procure the professional services of Ms. Kathy Novak of, or to facilitate strategic planning services. I ask that, that this item be brought before you for consideration this evening, Commissioners. You know, when I was, when I took office, April first, I had a goal in mind of, of holding a, actually, check that. When I was elected early March, I had a goal of holding a town hall meeting and beginning a strategic, strategic planning process within the first six months of being in office. But as you all know, by April first, when, when I took office and when the rest of you newly elected took office, everything had changed. And so we've kind of been doing the best we can and we've done a great, done a great job. Things, thanks to, you know, fantastic management from Mr. Hawalt and Ms. Burrows and wonderful department heads. The City of Clovis is functioning very, very well as an organization. But I'm still missing, and I, and I suspect you are as well, I'm still missing that strategic planning piece that, that we would all engage in and, you know, begin to bring, bring our ideas and our goals that, that are developed after talking with, with the, the citizens that, that put us here to the table and, and begin to prioritize things and, and make a plan for, for the way forward. And so that, that's why we have that, have that here on the agenda this evening. I would, I believe we have Ms. Novak on the line or perhaps has joined the video meeting. And so she is available and I'd like to hear from her, have you hear from her. Ms. Novak, are you there?
Mayor, I think she left.
Oh, no. Okay. Ms. Burrows, would, would you like to expand on this? And I, I know some, some of the Commissioners are, are familiar, but was it 2013 when Ms. Novak assisted us with the strategic planning process back then or assisted the commission at that time with that? So could you add anything to this?
Certainly, and, and thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Commissioners. I have in front of me the, the document that Ms. Novak gave to the commission at that time. There were specific projects and initiatives in there, the majority of which have been completed. There was support funding for the construction of the U pipeline project. And of course, that's ongoing. The interim pipeline, the affluent reuse, which of course Mr. Hawalt's been diligently working to complete. Economic development was airport projects and the regional air service. And of course, you have TSA ongoing there. Conducted a citywide market-driven comp plan, which of course you completed last, you know, earlier know, earlier on this year for the employees. Widening Seventh Street, of course, that's been completed between Norris and Maple. And of course, we're still looking for funding for the wellness center for the next phase for that. Says construct a civic senior center, and of course, you've just been allocated the funding for that. So a lot of the projects that are listed in the, in the plan that the Commission at the time put together with the, with the public have been completed. So this is opportune, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burrows. Appreciate that. And again, commissioners, I, you know, I ask, I ask Mr. Hawel to Ms. Burrows for, for some help, you know, putting together something for you to consider for us, to seek some consulting on some strategic planning. And this is, you know, naturally what they came up with because Ms. Novak had performed well in the past. Those of you that were here then have personal experience and, you know, may know that she's exactly the right one to use, or you may have, have some other opinion. In any case, you know, kind of like the other things that we've persevered and went ahead and got done in spite of the challenging circumstances that 2020 has presented, I feel like that the strategic planning process is worth it, and we need to, we need to push forward with that in some fashion, whether it be with Ms. Novak or something that you may propose. So I'll check with each of you for comments or questions that you may have, beginning with Commissioner Madrid.
No questions. Commissioner Madrid here.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Rinder.
Commissioner Rinder, no questions.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Bryant.
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant, no questions at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Lovett.
Commissioner Lovett, no questions.
Commissioner Garza.
Commissioner Garza, no questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Rowley.
Commissioner Rowley, no questions.
Commissioner Elliott.
Commissioner Elliott, no questions.
And Commissioner Casals.
Commissioner Casals, no questions.
Very good. Well, we must have done such a great job of explaining that. If there are no other questions or comments, do I hear a motion?
Make a motion when we go ahead and approve. Commissioner Madrid.
Okay. Motion for approval from Commissioner Madrid.
Second.
Commissioner Lovett, second.
And Commissioner Rinder had the second there. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Madrid.
Commissioner Madrid, yes.
Commissioner Casals.
Commissioner Casals, yes.
Commissioner Elliott.
Commissioner Elliott, yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant.
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant, yes.
Commissioner Garza.
Commissioner Garza, yes.
Commissioner Rinder.
Commissioner Rinder, I.
Commissioner Rowley.
Yes.
Commissioner Lovett.
Commissioner Lovett, yes.
Thank you. By a vote of eight to zero, the motion is carried. Thank you, commissioners. That brings us to reports of boards, officers, and committees. And the one that we had planned there was the one that we moved up in the agenda earlier. So for reports, I would like to ask Ms. Malonson, if I could put you on the spot, to just report on the details around the CARES, the local CARES Business Continuity Grant. You know, how many of those have we been able to get checks to, to local business owners? How much have we paid out, that kind of thing?
Of course, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tim and Commissioners, happy to provide happy news. Of the 4.2 million, we have submitted four requests totaling a little over two, almost 2.6 million. We have received funding back from DFA for the first two. I have handed out checks for all but two of those entities, hoping they will both be able to come in tomorrow. We are waiting. I'm expecting number three in at any point in time. So we have about 1.65 million remaining for this second round, and the remaining ones in the first round that we are also waiting on reimbursement for. The Chamber State, they have about a little over 45 applications that they have received that are in process. And of course, we'll wait and see, since the deadline is tomorrow at 5:00, how many more we have there, and we will get those processed as quickly as we can. We're seeing about a five to 10-day business day turnaround time from DFA from the time I submit until we're able to provide those funds to the businesses. And on the other side, our local government that was being used to help with citizen assistance, we have submitted almost 66,000 of the 70,000 that we had, and we have reimbursed on six of those payments. I have three, two that are in process at DFA and one that I will be hopefully submitting tomorrow. So any questions, I am happy to answer if I can.
Yeah, Ms. Malonson, the last part that you reported there, the local CARES funding, and you mentioned 70,000, that was the housing assistance.
The housing, utility, and childcare assistance, correct.
Very good. That EPCOG administered for us.
Correct.
Yeah, wonderful. Thank you for that. And great news that Clovis business owners have check in hand from the Business Continuity Grant, and it sounds like we, you said 40-something applicants at this point for the second round?
Correct. Forty-five plus, forty-five plus.
Forty-five plus. And tomorrow at 5:00 PM is the deadline for, for getting your application in for the second round. Rather than go around to each commissioners, wave at me or speak up if you had a question for Leanne on the CARES report. Very good. You did a great job, Ms. Malonson.
And I will say that Jean Porter isn't the only one who has said thank you. Everyone who has been in has been very gracious and very appreciative of the funding that you were able to provide for them.
Thank you for stating that. Appreciate your work on this program, Ms. Malonson. Appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Burrows, can I put you on the spot? Let's report on the MRA Town Hall.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tim and Commissioners. We had a wonderful MRA Town Hall a couple of evenings ago. I would like to thank all of you that attended that virtually again, of course. Jackie Fishman and her team did a wonderful job of walking us through the two MRA districts and helping us decide which areas had opportunities for addressing buildings and what buildings were important to the group. And there were probably about 30-plus people on that virtual Town Hall. It went very well. There was lots of great input. And so we will now move forward. She has sent us today paperwork from, from the analysis from the work that you did a couple of days ago with the public. So we'll be putting that, I think we voted actually, onto the city's website today so you can go on and have a look at the results of those surveys. So thank you to everybody that participated out there in TV land as well as the Commission for all your, your efforts in that regard.
Thank you, Ms. Burrows. Appreciate that. Any other reports? Hearing none. I'll share with you briefly, report to you as participation with the Mayor's Council, which I've been a part of now since the first part of May. That has moved to a every-other-week meeting, and I would say that the, the communication between myself and the Governor's Office has, has definitely slowed down. The frequency is a lot slower. But today, we did meet virtually, of course, and I just kind of wanted to, to report about that. We're all aware of the, the update to the order with the red, yellow, green phases and the county-by-county reopening. The Governor's Office feels like that by, by giving us a county-by-county approach, which, which incidentally, you know, is what we were asking for as far back as May, June timeframe. But they, they believe that the county-by-county approach really puts the, the pressure on the local communities, the counties and municipalities to, to really manage this, the gating criteria, the positivity rate and the cases per 100,000 in population. So I know you're all probably aware of that, but I would encourage you to acquaint yourself, if you're not already, with, with that health order, the red, yellow, green phased reopen plan. Very simply stated, we are red, and so is most of the state, but Curry County is red. For us to get to yellow and for restrictions to be eased, we would need to do one of two things. That is, have no more than eight cases per 100,000 in, in population, or I like to just cut that in half because we're approximately at 50,000 in population county. So we would need to have four cases or less per day for a two-week period to, to move to yellow. Or we could have our positivity rate be 5% or less over a 14-day period, and either of those happening would, would move us to, to the, the yellow phase. So I guess if, you know, if we were to want to game that system, we would all go out and get tested as frequently as possible and, and throw a bunch of negative tests into that calculation and bring the positivity rate down, right? During today's meeting with the Mayor's Council, I followed up on something that I had leaned into pretty hard a couple of weeks ago, but didn't get, didn't get an answer or didn't get the follow-up that I was promised a couple of weeks ago. And that was around the 75 customer limit in our grocery stores and the lines that we're seeing happen outside of grocery stores and, you know, and my concern, and I know yours and everyone else's concern about that and just the, the difficulty that that creates if you think about people having to be on their feet for hours in line before getting into the store to shop and, and is that really helping anything and all of those things. And so I had asked, you know, could we get, could we have some dialogue on that and come up with something else? I asked about that again today. I wasn't the only mayor that did. That was, that dominated our, our meeting time, actually, and there was a, a lot of discussion on that. I did get the Chief of Staff, I got the Chief of Staff's promise that he was going to go directly to the Governor about that and, and report back to me. However, he made no promises about give on that. The Governor's Office feels like that that 75-person limit encourages people to not bring the whole family to the store and, and also encourages people to not get out. You know, it's really just a difference in, or it's a particular philosophy that they have that, that the restrictions on business could, could make all of the difference. And I've continually argued against that, saying that, you know, that the businesses have done a great job and continue to do a, a great job. And when I'm out and around town, I see people distancing and using face coverings and doing all of the things that, that we need to do. However, the spread is happening, and, you know, it's evidently happening in, in neighborhoods and in family get-togethers and things like that. But to continue to restrict the businesses is just, is just unfair. And so I continue to, to be that voice for, for our businesses and for our community. You know, I think that a little less restriction would be in order, paired with great info that would arm citizens with, with the information needed to make good choices and look out for one another. We do have a health crisis. And, and so what I would say, and I've been encouraging my friends and the, and the many members of the public that I hear from on this subject, is to not let your disdain for the state's strategy cause you to throw out all caution. We do have a, a problem. We do have a health crisis going on in, in our town and in our community and at our local hospital. And for that reason, I've tried to get everyone to, again, don't let that disdain cause you to throw, throw off the precautions. We do need to be careful. We need to look out for one another and do what we can to slow that spread. And I think that what's going on at the local hospital is, is most relevant to, to our community. And so you've noticed that recently, we started a daily report as to the number of folks in the hospital at PRMC. And so I just wanted to encourage everyone to, to please, you know, look at that report. Let what's happening locally with COVID-19 and with what's happening with the burdening of our medical folks out at PRMC, let that inform your decision-making and, and don't, don't let maybe resentment for the, what can be suffocating restrictions cause you to just throw caution to the wind because we do have an issue with, with COVID-19, and it is affecting people in our community. People are sick and people are dying. And so we, we need to look out for that. But to that end, watch that report and, and do the things that you know are going to help slow the spread. Let's, let's, let's try and get the numbers down with the state's strategy is clear. So let's, let's get the case counts down. Let's get the positivity rate down and, and hopefully get our community move to the, the yellow restrictions. So with that, I just want to double check that we didn't have anything else in, in reports. And I appreciate you bearing with me as I shared that. Oh, I did just want to report that the, the state is administering a Business Continuity Grant, Small Business Cares Relief Grant, and this is separate of the, the grant that the city was able to offer. And that application is going to open up on Monday, December 7th, and there are webinars out there for education on how to, how to navigate that process. You want to go to the Finance Authority's website, nmfinance.com, for information on that. If there are businesses out there that could, could benefit from that, I wanted to share that. That said, we will move on to future agenda items. Mr. Hawel, Ms. Burrows, do we have future agenda items to discuss or announce?
I don't have anything there at the moment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Any commissioners, if you want to just wave or flag me down, future agenda items? Okay, very good. We'll move on to announcement of date, time, and place of city board and commission meetings. The, the meetings that are scheduled are, are all planned to be virtual at this point, obviously. But we have scheduled an Economic Incentive Board meeting at 7:30 AM Wednesday, December 9th. Again, that's virtual. Planning and zoning commission meeting, 3:00 PM Wednesday, December 9th. And our next city commission meeting is scheduled for 5:15 on Thursday, December 17th. And with that, commissioners, appreciate your time this evening, and we are adjourned.